All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Time to call our March 14th Board meeting into order. Hopefully, you all have received the agenda, which was distributed earlier this week by Crystal. Take a look at the agenda, and if desired, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I need to change that.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved. Any second?
Who's seconded?
Not yet.
I'm second.
All right. Kathy, second. Any discussion?
Yes, I need to add master plan and subcommittee updates.
Thank you. Any other adjustments?
Am I supposed to adjust? This is never going to work. What else am I supposed to add?
A master plan for the subcommittee updates. So that's down below the finance committee and put master plan.
Okay. Under subcommittee, the master plan goes under there.
Correct. Yeah.
All right.
Does that need a motion?
Uh, yeah, we've already moved in. We're into the discussion. So any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Agenda's approved with one notification. We will add the master plan to the subcommittee's updates. That will take us to the minutes. Earlier this week, we did have a copy of the minutes that were distributed. Quick second moment to look at those. And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting.
I move to approve the minutes.
Kathy, second. All right. It's been moved and properly seconded that we would accept the minutes from our February 8th board meeting. Any discussion?
Who's seconded?
Yeah. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carries. That will bring us to public comments. And we do have a few members of the public today. So I'll allow you guys to introduce yourselves to the trustees and any public that might be watching. And have any comment that you'd like to have. We won't limit you to the three minutes printed if you need four or five.
But that's it.
Well, I'm sure that I can get it done in less than two if I try really hard. So thank you, first of all, for inviting us. I'm Kevin Parkins. I am the newest Farmington City Council member to be like the Farmington City Council. I appreciate the invite and I'm here just to introduce myself, meet you guys, observe, and listen. So thank you again.
I'm Maria Taylor. I'm a Farmington City Council member since 2017. Thank you so much again for the invite. I think it's great that you're having a meeting here as well as Farmington Hills. I think you have two branches. And I've always thought that they should have meetings divided in half and half between the two. This is such a hub for the downtown Farmington community. And I'm glad to see you here. I'm glad to see that the value is investable. I also serve on the bicentennial committee along with the other Maria. Together, we are M squared. Just a couple of things that I want to mention that we worked with library on. One is our historic banner program. If you walk around downtown Farmington, you'll see a lake post banners with historic photos situated, kind of most of them right across from or right next to the building that is depicted on the banner. Those photos are from the heritage room and we appreciate that resource more than you can imagine. We're all, Maria and I, are also working together on the bicentennial then and now augmented reality app. I was just upstairs meeting with our app designer, but working on getting funding, which seems very promising. Figures kind of stuck on wood from SciFi Networks, the broadband company who's doing our massive broadband, Farmington Hills broadband project this year and next. So they're going to sponsor, assuming all goes according to plan. And then Gabriel Hall is going to, who's a Farmington resident, is going to put together the augmented reality app, again, using, using photos from the heritage room. It's been very fun working on bicentennial. And if there are any more event, when, when further events come out, I'll make sure to get included on the media list. So you can attend. The launch date for the app is part on the grant.
Okay.
Any comments on the comments here?
We wish the public a fine.
First, thanks both of you for coming. Second, it occurred to me that this library is in a little corner here. It would be nice if the city council put a sign right here at the corner of Farmington and State, library this way, and one up here at Grand River and Liberty, library this way. Right? Because we know where it is. We live in the neighborhood. But other people might not. The second comment is, I grew up in Kalamazoo and Maria's mom and dad were in my class in high school. They live closer to me now than they did when I grew up.
Can I make a quick follow up? I know you don't answer questions in public comment, but I have gotten this question a couple of times. So I figured I'd bring it up. The newspaper archives and the heritage room are down online. They're being updated and this is the bicentennial year. We so want to access them. If there's anything you can do to help speed that up and get them back online, it would be great. I'd be interested for us to research this.
All right. Do we know that?
Thank you very much.
We'll take that back and stay up and see what we can do. Like you, I am a lover of history. I spent a lot of time in Farmington Hills having a map viewer where you could kind of go and layer over the aerial view. I think all the way back to 1940 and kind of see what the area has looked like over the period of time. So fascinating. I had a chance last Friday night to attend the kickoff celebration. I did see Maria squared at the door pretty much as I approached the event. I did see Maile Arusa there, and I heard another of our trustees was out that night as well.
And she was at the.
I didn't see you, Dohara.
I didn't see any of you there. Maria's picture that has stayed.
But I will say that it was a great event and most of the establishments that I checked in on that evening were packed. So for them, and I think that's what it's all about. Everybody was having a great time, celebrating the heritage of the community. So I really enjoyed it. Thank you for your efforts, both Maria's and to the larger council and Farmington. All right. And that will take us to the treasurer's report. Kathy, I will turn it over to you.
Okay. And what does the board approve the February 2024 operating bills totaling $378,232.70?
Okay. Is there a second?
Support?
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we would approve the operating bills. Any discussion?
She moved it. Kathy moved one. Correct.
Sorry. I should help you out, Sharon. It was moved by Kathy and seconded by Kathy.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Any discussion? And I always say I have typically seen these as they come through the approving process. And Kathy has a little help. All right. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to receive and file the February 2024 financial reports.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's the move that properly seconded that we would receive and file the financial report. Any discussion? Moved by Kathy and seconded by Dohara. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carries. All right. Kathy, uh, let's see. Do you have anything else?
None.
None at this point?
Right.
All right. Thank you. We will move now to the friends of the library report. Kathy, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Bernie. Hi. I'm Mrs. Chalwater Dan. I'm a current husband of the library. The library.
You might have to speak up a little.
I'll try.
Hey, Stacy. We want to give you a full blow in.
That's so sweet of you. So a couple of things that you should be made aware of. We just sent out the Friends newsletter. It went out, I believe it was yesterday, as an email version. And Sarah Zitter is putting out paper copies as well and all the various service desks in both of the libraries. And while it's here toward Friends, it's also there so that people know what we're doing. So it's a little bit more of a PR campaign as well. In that, we have information about the odds and ends. Our auction is just coming up April 5th in the evening. And Jillian has been spearheading this because it's her idea. And Maria is going to be some involved somewhere. I can read that.
Or whatever the house is for the auction. Yes. She'll be present.
Great. That's going to be $10 at the door. You get two drinks tickets. We're going to have snacks and hopefully it'll be a lot of fun, kitsch oriented. We also have, in the newsletter itself, but you probably are aware of this as well. We'll have the big book sale the weekend of August 5th through the 7th, and that will run Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Did I say Aprils? Yeah, you did. April.
April. Your funny so far.
Yeah, I'm not that. I'm not that good. And if you are interested in volunteering, then you can let me know and then I'll forward that information along. So that's going to be a busy weekend because it's National Library Week. And to help celebrate that, the Friends board has, as we usually do every year, okay, funds for each of the libraries to have a small snacky so that they know how much we appreciate them. Some of it will be healthy and some of it will not be healthy.
Always thinking about the whole person, Stacy.
Right?
Yeah.
Right? You have to look at everything organically.
Absolutely.
Holistically. Library Giving Day is, we debated a little bit about this so that you know. It's quite expensive to send citywide mailers out to, I think it was 40,000 household. And I think the number that we potentially had for sending those, even sending it as a 501(c)(3), was somewhere between $22,000. I know. And while the response is always good and it's great to get new members, we thought that money would be better spent during things throughout year that are going to be years slightly differently. So we won't be doing a citywide mailer. And should that number persist, I doubt we will, we will do anything like that as well. I would rather commit our funds for doing those through the library that everybody could get and then do some online and in library things and look at targeting niche communities to let them know what a Friends membership looks like. Yeah, I just, it would be, we go in-house in terms of staying within terms of Farmington Hills for businesses that, the business rather that does this. And while it would be cheaper to do it either ourselves or to get an online company, I don't, I don't like spending something outside of the community, especially for things that happen in our community and should support and open businesses. So you won't be seeing a citywide mailer. And even if we do like a postcard mailer, those things are quite expensive as well. So we're looking at putting out related funds for something that everybody tells them that they could put in their cycle when they got it. So I think we'll do better. We'll do better in terms of creating more members and looking at our, our donation goals by, being a little wiser about how we do this.
Let me ask you a question about that.
Yes, please.
If you don't mind. The conversation around mailer for Friends membership, I am tracking. Has the Friends board had any discussion around their support of mailers in support of our yes campaign? I would assume those are two separate conversations.
They are separate conversations. And we have, we have committed funding those in motion in 2023 to, to do that, and it passed. So very, very much support. And I think that, I don't think we need to, to look at how it's been because the Friends have dedicated.
Okay. And the committee.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And then Kathy Wong has a good lead on inexpensive care items. So very cool. Right. And a reminder that the gala is June 7th. We're going to have a hometown band. We're having a singer backing like brass band. It should be a lot of fun.
Oh, we're having a month.
Month.
She said, oh, you did. I thought you were brass band.
She, well, there's going to be brass instruments, I guess, also.
Okay.
But it, it sounds like it's going to be a lot of fun. It would be very nice. We could figure out a few ideas, like having a student musician group perform before the big group does and having some of the splints, some things that the Friends sponsors and that in conjunction with the library so that people can see like sort of a poster session about what everybody is doing. So if I can get that together, then it will happen. Definitely. Any questions?
Question, yeah. About, is it going to be positioned in those circulation though?
Yeah, there's no other place to put it, Kathy.
Well, that's what I thought, but I'm wondering how loud the brass is about to be.
It's going to be loud.
So don't sit right there.
That's a good idea. I like that crazy because some people like to be upfront, but they also don't want to lose their fury. So thank you. Any, any other questions about anything?
For number out, if anybody's interested in volunteering for the odds and ends art auction, we are still looking for volunteers. So just let me know. And if you don't volunteer, I hope you'll at least come to the event. Should be Monday, Thursday. Friday, April 5th, and it starts at seven o'clock.
All right. April 5th. And Stacy, do you meet any volunteers in advance of the big book sale?
Yeah. I mean, we, I can always say volunteers, especially people who I trust to do things the way I want them to.
Well, I know that isn't short.
I can totally trust you. They won't snag all the cool LPs.
Well, no. I'm going to that part.
And there are some cool ones too, I got to tell you. Often.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy.
You're welcome.
That will take us to the director's report. Kelly, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So we were very excited that the Farmington Hills Police Department dropped off push keys on.
Yes.
Fat food day. That was a first. So, yeah, they dropped that floor. It was, it was a nice thought. On Saturday, February 24th, our seed library kickoff happened and there were over 200 people that came into that library or into that program. And that was the one where all the seeds were presented to them and to see what they could take. There's hardly any seeds left, if you notice that. You pull those doors open and there's like very few left. And they, they went through the supplies very quickly, which is where you started your own little seed garden with the milk carton. So it was a very popular program. So on Saturday, March 23rd, FAPD, which is in Farmington African-American Carrot Network and AKA sorority are holding a literary celebration event and has requested that the library be in attendance. So both the teen and the children's services department representatives from them will be there. And then Detroit Public Television was in filming that tall pile last Friday morning. And they're doing a segment throughout metro of Detroit called Imagine the Possibilities. And so they were, tall pile location was one of their highlights of the segment. Julie Donlin retired. She's been with the library for over 17 years and she decided it was time to retire. And so her last day was February 27th. She was an adult librarian. And then Jillian Beckwell, she was in the interlibrary loan department and she is starting her masters in library science and she got a job at Rochester University. So she moved on. Yeah. And then, of course, we are hosting the Greater Farmington Farmington Hills Area Chamber of Commerce Morning Boost on April 4th at 8:00 AM in the morning. If anybody is interested in attending, it's from 8:00 to 9:15, and that will be up at 12:00 by library. And then, of course, we were at the State of the Cities last Wednesday. And several of us attended that. That was Joe Larusa did a very nice job with highlighting the library and we thanked him a lot for putting this in his presentation. Well, that was good. Sherri Vaughn, who is our business outreach something. Grants, business outreach grants coordinator. She is hosting a workshop for the library network, which is the 52 libraries in the area. So she'll be doing that. We received our first state aid check deposit. You know, the first, the sooner you get that state aid report in, the faster you get the check. So this is, I think, the first time fast we've received it. And then we were at, well, we've had two opportunities to read at the elementary schools recently. I was at STEAM Academy about a month ago. And then Ernie and I were at Forest Elementary yesterday, I think it was. I'm in fourth grade. What did you have?
I had third grade and I didn't want to speak for you. And I said that we enjoyed ourselves, but I think we did. You probably heard me enjoying myself in my room. I felt like I was loud.
Oh, I went to, I ended up, when I walked, checked out of the office, they're like, did you get those kids? What about? And I'm like, oh, I'm sorry. Because there was one book I was reading that they had to yell two times and the office could hear them yelling.
So I think we both had.
So sorry.
That surprised them because my book was, I really don't want to read this book to you, basically. And it required a lot of yelling. And then they asked me to read another book, the book with no pictures. And so, you know, that book has you saying a lot of foolish things.
Right. I ended up reading like six books because they, because I had taken six books because I didn't know what age I was going to get. So I had something for every age. I ended up reading all six of them. Because when I walked in the room, they're like, oh, yeah, you have until 10:30. And I'm thinking, oh, my God, it's 9:40. What do you mean? So I ended up reading like six books of it. And then they asked me a bunch of questions. Did they ask you a bunch of questions?
They did. And I had a nice conversation with them about the library. I was happy to see, I'd say probably 95% of the class signaled that they visit our library.
Yeah.
And the ones that weren't visiting already, I told them to tell them mom and my daddy to get them there as fast as possible. I also had a little conversation with them about their understanding of trustees. And no one in the room knew what a trustee was. So we were able to talk about that and talk about public service and what it is for a good community to have engaged people. So I.
Yeah. One of the questions they asked me is, so is the library closed if you're not there?
And it's not.
And I was like, no. I have, you know, other people that can, you know, be in charge of the library. Oh.
They didn't ask me that.
Okay. Oh, yeah. It was a bunch of first of all, like, how many children? Do you have children? How many do you have? What are their names? Do you have pets? It was very cute. Yeah, it was very cute. It was great community PR, but they were, it was pretty funny. And I, oh, I have some correspondence here. This is from the Sisters Soaring Together. It's the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And we allowed them on February 2nd because it was American Heart Month, February is. And they had a table set up in the lobby where they provided health screenings to people. They're all doctors and they provided free health screenings to people. And so this is their thank you letter. And, oh, this is the thanks to Jamie and Anna for organizing Blind Date with the Book. And I don't know if you're even remotely interested in the Row of Commission of rural county's strategic planning report, but here it is. I.
I would be interested in that, absolutely. I'm interested in every facet of our government.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
You need more honey, Stacy.
So that's what I have for you. Any other questions for me?
Let's see. I don't know if I have a question for you, but well, no. Well, a few comments.
Yes.
The seed library kickoff, I was in the library that day and 200 people, no joke. The people were clamoring for the seeds and the information about the seeds. I picked up a few myself that, that day and took it by a week, but I planted a few higher years of the bean. I.
Long room.
But my lettuce has just started to sprout.
Oh. Good for you.
Well, right. Good for me because I did it right. Now I'm trying to figure out what to do next. So I probably need to, I should have attended one of the other sessions that we had as follow-ups. I'll be giving the library again if I know what to do now.
I planted lettuce last year. It, it, it was really good.
The other thing that I wanted to mention is the morning boost with the chamber. I know Kathy, Bob, myself have all attended that in the past. It is an 8:00 AM meeting, but it's a nice way to meet some business owners in the community and kind of understand what their needs are and how we can better support them. So I would highly recommend.
What, what day did you say?
Uh, Thursday, April 4th.
And what day did you say Sherri was hosting the library network?
Oh, did I give a date?
You might not have.
I might not have.
But if you can follow up with us on that date, that would be great.
Okay.
One of the things I remember from our surveys, community wide surveys that we did is a lot of responses seemed to think that we weren't a part of the library network. People were like, oh, I can get this from LaBona because they're a part of the library network and I can't get it from you guys.
We are not a shared catalog. That's the difference.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I might want to.
Because I, because I made that coming up. Because I get a lot of books to record township.
I might want to understand that better in a future meeting because as I, as we're going into this year, I've been going back through the survey responses again. And so I saw that bubble up a few times. And so I want to understand that. I want to understand kind of the decisioning around that, if there are cost considerations and kind of what staff.
You lose control. We're on a different. Yeah.
Okay. And that's what I thought, but I think it, it might be move us to take a look at those responses and figure out how we communicate better as to what sharing resources we do have available. I'm not sure that that's, that's, I don't know how we make it clear, but it bubbled up to my mind inside.
Yeah. It's, it's, if you become part of that shared catalog, you don't have any control.
No.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Kelly. Appreciate it.
Excuse me. I'm not sure if that means you don't have any control, Kelly.
So it's 52, 52, 78. I can't even remember how many. 68, 68 libraries. And you're trying to satisfy 68 libraries in a catalog. And so when you set up the catalog, you're kind of trying to satisfy 68 different libraries for what they want. So you don't, and you can't make any changes to the catalog unless all 68 libraries want to change to the catalog. And so good luck with that. Right?
Okay.
You can still search, you can still search in T L N.
You can still search T L N catalogs. It's just we're not shared, like we don't show up in their list of 68 libraries. We can still get stuff from them.
Right. But I think that's the disconnect.
As a user, I don't know how to do that.
And that, that part, I think that's the issue, right? So people don't understand that even though we're not showing up in that list, that they still could request titles. And I think that might be the part we need education on.
So I don't know how to do that.
Yeah.
Like I just go into the Farmington library. I request a book. I'm told I'll get about 12 weights. So I go to record township and I get it in like a week.
I think on our website, at one point, we listed that, that the library catalog is someplace to search. Along with the metro then. I think it was a lot.
Yeah. I'm sure this is just user error, but I don't know how to correct my error.
Well, I think as we are going out and talking to more publics this year, and I've been hit with the, you don't have what I'm looking for commentary, right? We all have, I think. It's just important to educate the public as much as possible on how, how the things do work because a lot of it's not necessarily clear to me either. I, I will be probably bringing some of these items as we go in the coming months, right? Because some of the things I'm looking at is like title availability. I'm counting availability with our circulation demand because I do recognize that our demand is higher than some other libraries where you might be able to go and pick it up. It's because they don't have the readers that we have and the folks that are utilizing the services. But it is something I'm keeping a close eye to this year especially.
Right.
All right. That will take us to unfinished. All right, that will take us to unfinished business, unfinished business. We have the twenty-four seven pickup locker.
Yes.
Kelly.
Okay, so we've been discussing this and I think I have. Okay, so in your packet is the cost analysis of them. And then Kathy had. Had some questions. That Thunder answered. I'm going to give them to you to read. I don't know that you'll, Kathy understands it because she has a working. She understands how the catalog works behind the scenes and what you need. I don't know that they're going to make any sense to you guys. It's more of a workflow behind the scenes type of thing. But if you're interested in hearing her, her questions and the who is the answer back. And it's about SIP licensing and those kind of things. And so I don't know if that. Well.
SIP lets one machine talk to another. So like one soft, one type of software talk to another type of software.
So it's the possibility that we might need another SIP license. So that's, but that's included in the cost that I have given type of thing. And, you know, and then workflow, like how do you check it out? You know, do you have to choose, do you create an F H or an F availability? These are only for the twelve mile library at this point because you can't find a place to put them around here right now. But down the road, we will be, assuming that you approve these for twelve mile, we will be applying them for four meters. Well, yes, if you would like to. Okay, so this is the piece of paper. We are going for twenty, it's one control module. It's twenty lockers in the control module. And so it works just like when you put a hole down the catalog, right now it will say Farmington Hills location, Farmington location pickup locker.
Lock the Hills pickup locker.
Well, right. Can be whatever you want to name it, but yeah. And then, then you would choose that as your pickup location. When it came in, it would generate that hole. You take it out to the pickup locker. The patron would automatically get notified that their item is available in the pickup locker. They come up, they scan their card and then they take their locker, close it up and. So it's twenty-four seven access because it will be outside the library at the front of the chair. Right? Yeah.
A question that I.
What? What if they're all full and then someone comes available?
So Sharon went to visit.
I asked that question.
But they have a different, they don't have.
They have a different system, but it's, the, the process is the same. They have, Penceville have forty lockers.
Sharon, where did you visit?
Pitts, Pittsville, N. R.
Okay.
And they, they're, that, that branch is the core that controls all of the branches that have it. And they have just this huge bank of lockers and she showed me and there are about six of them that are used. She said it's the same people all the time who put their books in. And if they don't come in here in twenty-four hours, they take them back out and put them back on the shelves. So they have to pick them up right away. And she said the other lockers have never been used. And I thought that was interesting that we had listed here twenty. Because they find that there are several people use it all the time, but they don't need so many lockers. The other problems that they have, they said the staff is no problem. They have the computer right there. They log them in just like they would in the shelves. That's not a problem. The, the climate is a problem sometimes. Things get frozen. The weather will affect the lockers outside. And you don't think that will happen. But she said in terms of staffing and putting them in and putting them back. And I was surprised how few lockers they actually need. So there is, there are people who like it, but it's not a lot of people. They do not have as many people there, I think in Pittsville, as they have at this branch. I don't know her numbers, so.
How many lockers did they have in total?
Oh, I, I had a photo and just took it off. I'm going to say. Twice as many, maybe forty? I'm not, I'm not sure without looking at my picture.
But more than twenty.
But they have more than twenty, but they have about six that are used. And they have like three levels on it. It's never, they're not, it's not used as much as you would think.
Well, still, I'm wondering. Did you ever find the answer out to that?
Well, I thought he answered it.
I don't know that, I don't know that I saw every.
Yeah, it was one of us.
It went out.
So there's a couple of things that are, there's a couple of things. So we still, we still send mail notices.
Yeah.
Through snail mail?
Which is not good.
No, we shouldn't be sending snail mail notices. So once, because the reason our hold time is so long is because you have to wait for those mail notices yet to get to people, right? So I've asked Megan, our circulation patron services supervisor, to research how many people are still on snail mail. And then we are going to phase that out so that we can set a, you have to come within three days instead of, I don't know, five, six, seven, I don't even. Yeah, five maybe? And so if, they're going to have to come fast because those books sit on the shelf until the very last day that they can come pick it up. And you can run through these new items much faster if they don't sit on the shelf that long.
If I can speak to Sharon's point, because I was a circulation clerk at Ann Arbor District Library for three years. And then later an intern and I worked at all of the locations, including Pittsville. Pittsville has a very unique community that they serve because it is kind of in the northern section. It's very rural. Yes, and so the usage of that library in and of itself is very unique. It was tended to be the one that people didn't visit that often. So in general, they do not get the type of level of service that a library like Twelve Mile or Farmington, that situated right in the smack dab in the center of the community would get. And I worked at Mallett's Creek, which is more of a community-centered branch of Ann Arbor District Library. We did have the out, the, the pickup lockers. And those were used all the time. And part of the reason that. I guess we, I think we would have experienced even more use if there was a longer time period in which people could pick up books. Because as a circulation clerk, we would load them in the lockers. They didn't pick them up for twenty-four hours. We would pull them and then the patron would call us and say, well, I came and my material wasn't there. And even though we told them upfront, you've had twenty-four hours. And then we would constantly be putting them back. So I do like the idea of keeping them in there for, for twenty-four hours. And I, and while I think, you know, they did provide you with some really great information. Pittsville is not necessarily analogous to what our library is. And you may have been rather served by this A. Traver Wood or Mallett's Creek or one of the libraries that is more.
Oh, the other thing I didn't mention is if it's not accessible, like somebody, one of the libraries there is in the shopping center or something. And if it's not on, but we are on the being dragged along, but if it's not on, on your way to work route or the way home. That also reduces that, that library uses, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, good info, Joe. Appreciate that. And good scouting out, Sharon. I think we need to do more field trips, right? So.
One more question about that. There's only, I think, I mean, unless things have changed since I've left. There's only one way that you can set the time limit for the hold. Okay, so does that mean that you, if you set the time limit as twenty-four hours for the pickup lockers, that would be for longer?
Correct, but I would not set it for twenty-four hours. I would set it for three days.
Three days.
My goal is three days.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's plenty of time.
You know, twenty-four hours is a great way to make a lot of people mad.
Right.
Right, yeah. Staff effort to constantly take.
Every day, yeah. I think three days is, is more of a doable, much more community oriented, same three days.
Yes.
And if you have a big upheaval, people who are getting married, you can change that to four days.
I can, we can change it to whatever we want.
Which is a beauty of us having our own catalog.
Right, exactly.
One of the reasons why we have our own catalog. Okay.
So anyway, so I, I've listed the price, the twenty lockers with shipping installation, startup fee and everything is. The twenty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-four cents, three hundred dollars, ninety-four cents. The optional features are the graphic wrap because Sona, our graphic designer is very excited to design something, so it's just not plain. And then the Cuban climate kit is to mitigate the weather to some extent so that.
It's something good, something Sharon's talking about.
Yeah, the humidity and that kind of stuff, but so. Yeah, so that's, adds another eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-three. I am adding ten thousand dollars for incidentals. That would be the SIP licensing, the electrical that needs to be done and the cabling for the. Internet access and all that kind of stuff. So total is forty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. This is already in the budget, in the capital outlay budget, because we have money left over from the A M H, which is the Automated Interior Handling System. So it doesn't require any transferring of money anywhere. It's just already included in the budget. And that money that's left over is a hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. So I'm just asking you to approve the purchase of the whole pickup lockers for the Farmington Hills location, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. That's what I'm asking. We're asking.
I move the board approved to purchase a whole pickup lockers for the Farmington Hills location at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Chris and probably seconded by Kathy that the board would approve purchase of whole pickup lockers for Farmington Hills location not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Any discussion?
I have a question that's undoubtedly really dumb, but this is my opportunity to ask it. Why do we pay sales tax? If we're a government.
Oh, you know, that's a good thing. We may not. It may be lower. Yeah, you're right. We don't usually, but they said tax in there, so I included that. See, you're saving money already.
Thank you.
I just found you two grand.
In the other discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. Did they say typically how long these lockers would last in terms of like maintenance?
Um, so it's going to depend on like if you're out in the elements or you're not out in the elements, like if you're undercover or whatever. These come in with a built-in awning over it with lights above it so that if it's, I mean, it's not that our front entrance isn't lit already. But it adds just a little bit more as you come up and whatever. But it's semi-covered space right now, but with the master plan, it could be fully covered. So, yeah, so if it's fully covered, then it's kind of out of the element. So obviously if you're in snow and water where it can be out and about, it's going to, they're not going to last as long.
And Ann Arbor, they did have a problem with the ice and the locks in the winter weather. They had a little problem because it folds and.
I wanted to know about support. You get support for one year.
No, you get it for the rest of the years. You just have to pay for it. It's lit and out.
So that's not included in this.
So the one-year support is included in that. And then it gives you the cost for two years, three years, four years, five years. Not on that one because it's, it's, it's. It is for the second, year two support and pricing, it's two thousand dollars. And then year three is two thousand eighty-two dollars. And then year four is two thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and year five is two thousand two hundred and nine dollars. So you're paying for the software as a service. And then you're paying for the support.
What was the last year?
Two thousand two hundred and nine dollars.
Does it include replacement parts and support?
I don't think it would include replacement parts, but it includes. Support, like if you're having issues, you know, software-wise or locks fail or whatever.
Well, that is one thing we need to know. If we're, if we're having to, if our maintenance person is having to fix this.
No, our maintenance person is not having to fix this.
Who will fix it?
They will have to fix it.
After the five years.
Well, or you submit another, you negotiate another contract of service. Yes, yeah, yeah.
I want to make sure I'm clear on the, the annual cost of the two thousand, when you do this, you just got to approve. That's for the service contract. Is that for the licensing and the service contract or just the service contract?
It's like the software that you need to connect.
Okay.
And the support, yeah.
There's sort of not, there's no discrete licensing fee plus support. This is an all-inclusive price.
Why don't we include the provider's service contract in this proposal? Then you know you have it. You've got the extra money to do it. Need to pay upfront? Pay upfront?
Well, if you want to pay upfront. I mean, I don't, why, you just wouldn't be, and yearly costs in pro, out of professional services.
If there's no advantage to paying it in advance, then.
I wouldn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The company can go out, the, the day they can have it, right? So.
Well, do they, do they commit to that price in the future?
Yes, because it's in the contract. Their revenue change. Yes. Yeah, I would just pay it out of professional services annually.
Great discussion. Is there a motion?
I, I have one further comment, but no insurance observations from Pittsville that they use six. And I'm concerned that it might be twenty.
Well, that's the smallest one you can get.
And Jillian's point being utilization at Pittsville is not comparable to Farmington. Because it's a rural, situated in, not in the center of the community. And so. We should have more usage. Here at the twelve mile.
And you're saying a twenty locker unit is the smallest unit?
Yes, and you can configure that locker, that unit to be eleven lockers because you can make giant ones. I mean, right now they're just all, you know, one size that you should be able to put twelve books in or some twelve to fifteen books in. But you can make it so you can put something huge in. So then the more, and they just combine all the lockers into one. So if you're making larger lockers, then you only get, you reduce the amount of lockers you get. We didn't want something to put like a library of things thing in because we don't know that we want to put library things, materials in a locker. So we're just sticking with the norm, which is twenty lockers and see how it goes. Because you, if it's very popular, you can always add to it or you can add configurations to it where you want, you need large items. You know, this, this is just the one unit, but it can be added on.
Any other questions for staff? With the board's pleasure, is there a motion? I didn't obtain a motion for approval of this item and for no other reason. I have some more discussion to wrap it.
We had a discussion and the discussion yielded no amendment to the motion. So I think we're good to vote.
All right.
So who's making the motion? It was made by Chris. Oh, it was made by me. Okay.
Okay.
See, I was the only one.
Must've been sleeping, I don't know.
Okay, all right. It's a rainy day. So it's been moved by Kathy.
No, it was by Chris, seconded by me.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Kathy, that we would approve. Boy, I didn't say that whole pickup lockers for the Farmington Hills location not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. I remember saying that. All of those in favor?
Those are the words I use when I vote.
Okay, all of those in favor, let me know what's saying. Aye?
Aye.
Any of those? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think this will add some accessibility to our collections. And I certainly would probably be wanting to use them because I'm always running around after hours, right? After people are closed.
And I will say, incidentally, as somebody who's done a number of after-hours programs, I can't tell you how many people come up to the door and they're like, I need to pick up my hold. And then we let them in and we do.
Okay, that will take us to. Some committee updates. All right, so Kathy, you got some updates from the finance committee. Is that right?
Well, no, but we run this cast, the finance committee. I'm just going to present this. So then, the recommended budget amendment and then the proposed budget for next year. You've gotten caught with it, except a little.
I'm sorry, I forgot to tell Chris. But I have a big one if you want to share. But I have a big one if you want to share. Did you want amendment first?
Yeah, I'm gonna do the amendment first. So just to, just to let you know that Kelly from Plant Moran usually does this. She's the first time doing it, so if there's a question, do you have any questions that I can't answer, I'm gonna point to Kelly and she's gonna, she's gonna explain, so. All right, um, the first one is fiscal year twenty twenty-four recommended budget amendment. We need to um add a little bit more money, but he'll look at, do you have this, I don't know if yours is in color.
Yeah.
Okay, so the part that's in red here under seven months, we're seven months into the fiscal year. And those are things that show, I believe, how much we've used, like the top one is we, we've ninety-eight percent, is that what that is?
No, those are revenues, so that's how much we've received.
Received, I'm sorry, yes, received, you're right. So we're um, so it shows that, it shows the percentage of how much we've received. And then the next one is the difference in the amended budget and what we've actually done through January thirty-first. And um then, the last column is the budget amendment, so that one doesn't really need to have anything done to it. If you go down a little bit and you're looking at local community stabilization authority, um. They want, they want to put in fourteen hundred more dollars to up that a little bit. Um, and the one that's penal fine revenue. We're gonna take out fifteen thousand?
Yes, they're estimating that you're not going, so they have estimated that, and when they did the budget, they estimated you're gonna receive a hundred and forty-three thousand. They're estimating that you're only gonna receive a hundred and twenty-eight.
And then the one, the three hundred dollars below that is the paper sales.
Right, which, yeah, yeah.
And we're not gonna do papers anymore, so taking that out altogether. With this. So the stuff in the glasses, that's what we're adding for the amendments and stuff in the red that was taken out. So we wanted to amend that to a hundred and thirty thousand. Which makes us amended budget of eight million one hundred forty thousand five hundred eighty dollars. Um, any questions about that?
Uh, I don't have a question, but I I comment. You know, we have this um cadence of budget amendments, um, and, you know, it really kept us on track. I did have a chance to review this earlier in the week, so I don't have any questions about it. Um, I will note that um you'll see increase uh under professional services as well, and some of that stuff is related to our planning activities that are part of it way.
Then going down to expenditures, um, we've, well, sixty-one percent of retiree health plan, so we're kind of. We're a little less, no, we're a little more?
A little more.
A little more.
It's supposed to be fifty-eight point thirty-three percent FM in January, so the rad is just a thing highlighted where you're just above, doesn't matter how far above you are, you're above fifty-eight point thirty-three percent.
Well, there's no amendments needed under expenditures there.
Well, no, there's a few.
Oh, there is?
Yeah, next page.
Well, not on this page.
Oh, what?
Yeah, third page.
Okay.
And the same thing goes where where these things, now if you'll see where it has pound sign D I V slash whatever, that's um. That's new. Oh, it was in professional services. But it was a bank fee and now it's in.
They pulled it out because the bank fees were costing a lot of money, and so they wanted you to see how much money, so they added it in line instead of it always be, it's always in professional services. And you just see the line item professional services, they pulled out the bank fee, we've been working with the bank to. Chris has been working.
Reduced those.
Yes.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see it break down, but the assessment.
Oh, you just need to talk.
Well, I just like you came over before, we were talking about Michigan class, right? And I think that I even said that there weren't fees based on looking at the statements and based on looking at the line items, so yeah, I would.
So that's, that column is showing what, where we are a little bit over on things and pretty much where we're supposed to be. Um, then the amendments, we'll see that we have to add some money. And then the seventeen thousand of is taken out of process because we haven't used that much. Go down a little further, building and improvements, we haven't used a hundred and twenty thousand, so we're taking that out, they're gonna adjust that. Um, and then furniture and furnishings, the same thing, they're twenty-seven twenty, and then equipment, there's fifty thousand. So the operating expenses they want to amend is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Any questions about that? Okay, so the last page. Showing the expenditure amendment of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that gives an amended budget of. Eight million one hundred forty thou- forty thousand five hundred eighty dollars. So.
Where, where did you see that number?
It's on the last page.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, my pages are different than yours. Oh, I think he's looking at the wrong page.
I don't think so.
I mean.
The, the longer pages.
There's two, there's two pages, and there's two things.
I mean, it's right there, I'm sorry, but yeah, mine goes on the next page, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, oh, sorry, I don't do it, everybody.
I'm usually.
So do they have any questions about that?
Basically, the amended expenses meet the amended.
So adding a hundred and thirty thousand to the revenues and a hundred and thirty thousand to the expenditures will change the budget to eight million one hundred. Forty thousand five hundred eighty dollars. I propose to amend the two thousand twenty-four fiscal year budget as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and probably seconded and used, uh, set the amended budget as presented, any discussion?
Can I ask how for the expenditures, those decisions are made of, um. So like the seventeen thousand that hasn't been spent, the hundred and twenty thousand that hasn't been spent. How are those selected as ones to take money back? As opposed to like the line of computers that is so far, it looks like five percent of that has been spent, but we're not, are we expecting this?
Like, is that what that is? Yes, because what, so for equipment and building improvements and fir- furniture and furniture machines, because. Um, this says January through January thirty-one, because that's the latest, they didn't have the February numbers yet, but uh. The computers have been spent, they just purchased computers, so we ask IT and say, are you gonna make a purchase? If they say yes, we leave it alone, because we can always make another budget amendment in June before the fiscal year ends. And then we talk to facilities and say, hey, do you have any big building and appropriate thing that's coming up that you need the money for? And he's like, yeah, no, I don't have, we can cover that in what's left, so, yeah.
And then Plant Moran is our common firm, and they're the ones who kind of figure this out.
Oh, for us, is that right? They, they, they say, hey, how luck is, they come to me and I say, hmm, I'm gonna spend this kind of money, so no, don't take it down that far, and then we negotiate, basically.
Yeah, good question, and I appreciate, you know, again, the staff dealing with the budget, maintaining expenses, um, keeping a close eye to that, saving us money everywhere we can. I think most, every project that we've done in the last few years has come in generally under budget and off early pretty much, so um, I do appreciate that. Any other questions for the session? All right, seeing none, all of those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Okay, on to the next spreadsheet, which is the fiscal year twenty twenty-five proposed budget. I don't know what's to say. It's kind of nice, though, um, on this one, it takes the years every fiscal year, it shows what we got in revenues and what we spent since two thousand nineteen. So, and it shows you what we actually spent during those times and what we received. So and and the yellow highlighter, well, yours is great, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four Monday budget, we just passed that. So that's showing the figures that was just on the amended budget. And um. On the proposed, which is in the last column, fiscal year twenty twenty-five proposed budget. They pretty much taken the amount of our budget projected for twenty twenty-four and put that for twenty twenty-five. Now, there's a few things that you'll see that are a little bit different, um, one, two, three, the first four lines, what is the summer tax revenue, built in city and winter tax revenue, built in city. That's a little bit more than we have now, but. No, I'll just go up, we don't got our sessions, but.
Well, and these aren't the true numbers yet.
Well, I know.
Yeah, so they've estimated a reverse that increase in tax revenue, but they won't know until the end of April.
And that's based on the fact that fortunately we build in some places. Who is valued.
Yes. So down a little bit farther, there's auditorium fees, you'll see that there's nothing there because we're not gonna be charging for auditorium fees. And a little further down, there's paper sales, and we're not like doing papers anymore. And legacy gift memorial revenue. Let me explain that one. It's below the paper.
Right, so that's just um. You know, that we haven't had any in there in years, as you can see, so I think it's one of those in and out type of things, I don't think we ever have money in there.
Was that like less to one?
It could be, yeah.
And I feel like, Kelly, wouldn't you think that probably all falls into that next line item, which is memorial and gift revenue? I think they might have consolidated those.
And then the bottom one, transfer in while we're, we don't know what we're transferring in as anything.
So one of the things that we love to do is, and you have a master plan. And you have to decide on what you want to work on next year.
Any questions?
Yeah, define transfer, yeah.
So that's like when we did transferred money from the capital, like we camped the AMH machine, we transferred the two hundred and fifteen thousand, so that's where that, when you decide to do that, that's where that goes. Or it's the transfer in.
And what was the explanation about memorial gifts?
That the next one has absorbed it.
And they aren't anymore?
Well, I think there's no, there's no money there, they don't count on money being there, but if something comes up, then they put it in there, kind of like the transfer in line.
Yeah, but we also have other money that memorial and gifts. There's two, yeah.
Yeah, I think I would check with Plant Moran to see if they consolidate those maybe, I think the memorial gift revenue and the, and the legacy gift memorial revenue are the same.
Seems a little sloppy.
I agree, so that's why we should ask Plant Moran to.
It's not big, both.
Yeah. But I think what they want to show Sharon is that, I guess previously, like back here in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. There was a line item called legacy gift memorial revenue that apparently has gone away, and now we have the memorial gift revenue. So so going forward, everything has been recorded there, but I think this order that it's showing that they have this other line item.
I know, you're right. But that means in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, you had.
We have, oh, which is the sloppy part.
I'd love to understand.
That's the sloppy part, and that was before my time.
Well, that was before Plant Moran, too.
So Plant Moran probably when they came onboard collapsed those two, and now we have just the line item for the legacy gift and memorial revenue, the last one.
And once we stop showing twenty twenty fiscal year, that'll go away.
Right, right.
Any other questions about this page? Okay, next page talks about expenditures, it's kind of the same thing, it shows our amended budget, which is what you'd see on our last spreadsheet. Um, and um, eight through January thirty-first twenty twenty-four, and the projected budget, so that's on our last spreadsheet. Now, the proposed budget is a little bit, in most cases, is a little bit more because there's a three percent. Due to, includes the merits, uh, the merit increases for the staff, because this, this talks about salaries and things for the. So. Evaluation five percent merit?
No, the budget line, well, we haven't decided merit increases yet because we have to meet personnel committee is meeting towards the end of the part.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is the three percent. This is raised three percent as the revenue was raised three percent.
Any questions about that? And again, on the next page, it's just showing the same, the same, the proposed budget is the same as our funded budget. So the proposed budget is going to end up being eight million one hundred, one hundred sixteen thousand one hundred fifty. We don't have to vote on that today because it has to be, has to be for the public, the public opinion, we have to do, and I think that's when we vote on that. But this is just to show you what is proposed. Right, any question?
Um, could you talk about that revenues over expenditures?
I'm gonna let Kelly knock on that, because I had that same question.
Which one are we looking at? Are we looking at on the proposed? Well, okay, so that's for, for January thirty-first twenty twenty-four, because that's what it's under, right? It's, right now, we have two point two million over our expenditures.
More revenue than expenditure.
More revenue than expenditure.
With some expenditures yet to come.
Well, absolutely, you're only six words.
And we have, um, we probably will have a transfer at the end, as we have historically.
Right, you will transfer out again this year, not that much, but you, we, we do every year.
And it goes to the chemical plant.
Goes to jungle, just back into. A jungle plant, just back into the line. Unaccounted for.
Unaccounted.
Unaccounted for.
I don't think you're likely to say it that way.
Not in, on any line item, you can use it for whatever you want.
I would say.
Undesignated. Right, it's unaccounted for.
Yes, undesignated.
Yeah, undesignated.
It is accounted for. Uh, Kelly, you indicated that, um, of course, we will likely see some changes here.
Oh, yes, yes.
The rest of the.
Yes.
And with some of the inputs on the planning activities, do you anticipate any changes from a service perspective or from the staff's hearts, desires? Is there anything that anybody feels like needs to change here regarding like programming and services that would represent a change in the budget?
No, but we do have wish lists for buildings.
All right.
And spaces. So that will have to be decided.
All right, well, thank you very much, Kathy, um, the budget hearing will be in May.
Uh, well, that's on the, under new business, so yeah, we can, yeah.
All right, um, but let me not move too fast, I think we have one more, um, so committed report, and that is on the master plan, so Kathy, we will.
So on Monday, March eleventh. So on Monday, March eleventh, Steve Schneeman and Diane.
Shurg.
I got it well. From MCD Architects presented FCS staff updated master plan. And we had seen the master plan before, and I think at one or two meetings, I may have posted what they posted initially. But um, what he, what he showed us at that meeting was updated changes that his staff had requested. At the previous meeting, so Steve says he's been discussing our updating the Farmington location with Farmington City Hall. No clue about that.
Seen any sketches or designs yet?
Yeah, well, we have, well, we did though. Um anyways. Um, yeah, he's been talking to the city hall about that. And he presented us with three different versions of possible renovations of the area, of this whole area. One enlarged the city hall and kept it next to the library. One moved the city hall close to Grand River with a parking structure between the library and the new city hall. So they would make a new city hall or maybe extend it on the river. One enlarged the city hall and kept it next to the library. And then the third, combined the city hall and the library into a two-story building.
Yeah, cool. Everybody talking to Dan, so the first proposal maintains the, the city hall with an expansion.
Yes.
And maintains our current building.
Yes.
The second maintains their current building.
No, moves their current building down to find Grand River, there's an open space right there.
Yeah.
They would use that open space. And I'm not sure if they would keep part of the old city hall and extend it there or just make that a two-story new city hall. He wasn't really, you know, he voted. And then the third was combining the city hall and the library into that building. So Steve said he was going to present these different versions at Farmington City Council meeting. And will be presenting the full master plan and costs to our board hopefully in April. That's what we would like, but I'm not sure if it's going to be out of there. It might be missed. Um, once that's presented to us, we can then mull over the possibilities before making changes to that. And then make a decision to move forward.
I have asked him, like, because I knew that we were doing budgeting for next fiscal year. So I asked, I asked him to give me, like, you know, some standalone projects that, you know, like, you know, be like low hanging fruit, that I think that would be. So apparently we have two different versions of what low hanging fruit. But um, so he's like, Diane and I reviewed the master plan, which just the board consider the following standalone projects that would have significant public impact with relatively low cost. For downtown. Corner amphitheater and landscaping approximately three hundred to four hundred K.
But hold on a minute, Kelly, I think this is my problem with this conversation. I don't understand how I could consider.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Lock is supposed to be reconfigured.
Well.
Why would I spend money on?
I, I know, I, so like, I'm just telling you, remove upper and lower restroom, renovate upper and lower restrooms with new finishes and fixtures to conform to ADA standards, a hundred and eighty K. For Farmington House, outdoor patio study area budget approximately two hundred K. ADA improved, so my idea was fifty and below. So, you know, I, maybe I don't have a grasp of what things cost, but, so I don't know, like, I, when you see the master plan, yeah, I don't know. But this is what he's figuring out. Throw these other things. Add three new study rooms in the current quiet room, approximately eighty K. Or modify the cafe to reduce sound transmission, approximately seventy to eighty K. And the reason he's suggesting those is because they're not tied to any other project, meaning building out.
But I guess my, even with the cafe, like that line item for the cafe, to my estimation, there's discussion, right, about whether the cafe would maintain the current configuration. Would it, should it be larger, should it even be?
Well, and that's in the master, well, yeah. I'm just telling you, like.
And the low hanging fruit project, why would I spend money on that when in three years I might be demolished from the cafe and moving it to a different location?
Right, right, so I, I'm just saying, that's what, I asked for some huge suggestions to put into, because I would like an outdoor space. And I think that is like a very impactful thing to have. I didn't expect it to have to be that small.
Alright.
So, I don't know.
I think it would.
I will tell you that my outdoor space at my house did not cost. So, yeah.
Well, I, I have a concern that, you know, you're gonna go for this village in November. And you have all these ideas to start around the community. If I live in Farmington and I don't want to see anything changed, I'm gonna say I'm not gonna vote for another village because they're doing things that I don't want it to see changed. You know, you have these ideas floating around and people discussing them, um, it may not ever happen. I, that might be detrimental to getting how people vote for the village in November.
Sharon, I want you to know that it's my thought exactly.
And, and it really worries me because if it does pass, you don't have any money.
I have shared that with others, other stakeholders, that I can think that is a concern. I want voters in November to be really clear about what they're voting for. And if they're voting for operating village renewal with an increase to cover heavily. I don't want people looking at the ballot thinking they're voting for a new library building.
Right, yeah.
That's a different point of consideration, and that's not what people are voting for.
Especially in this economy.
Okay, because we've already, we've already agreed that we're keeping our village as is with no increase due to the fact that we know citizens are sensitive to being over taxed already. And as I'm making calls to people about the village committee, even our supporters, people are saying, yeah, already, I'm on the committee, you can count on me. They're saying, you know, right now, everybody is a little taxed and, you know, they're concerned, people are rightfully concerned.
And your cap's just went up five percent.
So so I think, you know, for my taste, I don't know if we need to even have any further discussion necessarily around drawing sketches or any of that until after November. Because we need to ensure that we got funding for our operating budget. Um, number one, and then number two, I think really we need to make sure, um, that I guess everybody's kind of in alignment with the ideation that's going on, right? Um, because we had presentations here about this topic, and you've seen drawings already that involved our current facility here in Farmington with additions, you know, we've already seen that. So now I'm here, we got some other ideas, right, in the pot, which is good. But I want to make sure the public is not confused about what we're asking them to do in our work. And I'm not sure myself what is even being proposed from the.
There's nothing being proposed.
It doesn't sound like anything proposed, it sounds like there's some idea.
Right.
Right, and some conversation. And you remember, those ideas and conversations, as they reach the public, could lead to that sort of confusion that Sharon, an earning of just mentioned.
But it's an eight to ten year master plan, whether you start at year one or year five.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter.
About.
Is it correct that the master plan resulted from public feedback, survey?
Strategy, strategy to plan it.
Okay, yeah. So I think it should be, we should be really, um, to share the message that anytime we talk about any future plan, it is, that, that came out of, from the public. These are not decisions that staff are making independently or the board is making independently. This is in response to what we've done.
What else we need to know, Kathy?
I don't have to say. Tell me, oh, they went through everything.
So my only observation will be the city council members. They should take over the old Masonic temple, directly cross the street and turn that into our city hall and tear down this modern building next door. It would be cool. Just a thought.
I've just got one of these.
Kathy, thank you for continuing to work with the committee and even as a forum. Um, you know, it is a long way off, and these discussions, you know, they're five-year plus plans. Um, but I think to Sharon's point, the public, um, you know, you hear any rumble in everything, and it's like a disease. Um, and so we have very passionate publics right now, and so we just hope we clear them out of what we're asking. Um, but yeah, I appreciate you working with the committee and continuing this, this work down the path.
Would you prefer them not to come in April or May and wait till after reelection or what?
I think so.
And I, another input I'll just make on this question, because I don't create the agenda, is look and see how busy our agenda is. I mean, if we just, you know, like, keep wanting to talk about the master plan when there's no immediate implementation, but we've got other business before us, we're gonna be here in meetings until nine thirty at night. And, and, you know, basically like, just like, you know, logged out for the last half hour. But so I think we need to keep the decision-making stuff, that we need to get going with the village and what have you, um, really driving the agenda. And then if there's time on a reasonable agenda, you know, we could have a conversation. But I don't create the agenda, but I know we're gonna have a lot of business on it coming up. We're gonna have the budget, and you know, we have that.
Ag- agree, so.
So just let the agenda drive it.
Based on that input, I, I think it then makes sense for us probably to wait until fall to have another UFL staff unless you feel like there's something that we need to, to do.
Well, just because you approve it doesn't mean you have to move on it.
Well, I understand that, um, but I think.
What would we be approving?
Who would?
Well, you'd have to prove it.
The plan document, that's the thing, there's gonna be a plan document that's submitted to represent our intentions for the next.
Eight, ten years.
Yeah, um, and so right now, I think you know, I'd rather have that conversation probably in December or four weeks.
A week, a December four week?
Just thinking of plan board member, I'd like to have that conversation with Nancy Maine agenda item.
Well, they'll make the presentation, that'll take a while, but then we're not gonna say any or need to that. We're gonna take that open study and decide, well, maybe I don't like the fireplace moved over there or, you know. Maybe I don't want this or that. Yeah, and then we can come back and make our, our suggestions to make things.
Yeah, because you have input, so you, it's not gonna be, so you just have to decide when you want to see it.
I also appreciate this, having it as an update from the subcommittee, that it's just an update. You don't have to move on anything, name any decision, just to have it, rather than in December or anything.
Well, no, I left that, I do want Kathy to be updated, but as far as thinking about approval of the work product, that's what I'm thinking, and that could change, um, I do have some input in this, so, you know.
I'm just saying, let your agenda drive it.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't really think there's going to be much more for me to report on because they were going to make their, their presentation to UFL staff, to the board. At least that's what I understood.
Right.
Yeah, well, we'll see how future it shakes out.
Right.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate that. Alright, that takes us to new business. Alright, we have budget hearing in May.
Do you want, so I need to know, do you want it in May and at the May board meeting at what time?
Cause the public is to protest.
Cause of the public.
Right, and we typically have them at, what, one hour before.
I mean, you can do it at six o'clock and then close out. Six fifteen and then go right into the meeting, if that's what you want to do.
Chris, 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 I thought.
No, I'll say you really shouldn't do like an hour before, half hour should be surprised.
Explain to me how, what, how does this meeting work or?
It's a budget hearing.
It's a budget hearing.
The budget to the public.
Okay.
No one comes, but.
No one comes.
But then it's Plant Moran. Right, you still have to have it. And Plant Moran usually presents to you or presents to the public, also presents the final budget to the board, public can comment. You close out of that meeting and then open your board meeting.
I see, so you have a public meeting first with Plant Moran doing the presentation, and then you have a board meeting?
Yeah.
So you could just stay in your little room because no one comes?
Right.
I got it.
After, after they do the presentation, we open up the board meeting, then we have to approve.
Approve.
Right. So do you want to do it at six o'clock?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And what date is that, May one?
Midnight.
Do you have a date to put in the minutes?
Midnight. Early morning, okay. And I will be. You will, okay.
Alright, so that'll be set for May ninth, and then we'll have public notices go out in advance, um.
How long, Sam, a week?
Uh, I usually run it three times, just to.
Any other questions or discussion on upcoming budget hearing? Okay, that takes us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence from you? Alright, that takes us to trustee comments. Do any trustees have any further comments? Okay, I think Sharon's handling the first and Chris.
I have a paper that shows the, um, schedule for the village discussions and so forth. Is there a scheduled meetings and do we have a, a committee head now for the village? Um, it goes, the time will come up really quick.
Yeah.
Yes, we do have another meeting scheduled for.
On twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, um, for those who have indicated interest in the village committee. We are still looking for a head of the village committee, uh, which I even shared with Maria last Friday evening. Um, and I have a few people who are tentative, but they're kind of like, if somebody else stands up, they would rather not, but they would in a clutch. Uh, so Sharon, do you have the know anybody who might be interested? I'm willing to make a recruitment call afterward.
No, I don't, um, I've been thinking about it, but I don't know anybody. I haven't been involved with the library, you know, for last, for a couple of years, so I don't know the people who you worked on in the past or would be promoted with them.
Well, I think the last one was quite a while ago, and so, you know.
Yeah, it would have been two thousand and eleven.
Do we have a, a charter here?
So you have, you have the board of the language by April one?
I, I, yeah, well, we're now going in July, I don't know if that's for the November. I mean, we're not going in November. Well, yeah, I don't remember which one that was for. We have time now.
I, I will say, we distributed a schedule based on an early election date. And then when we decided as a board that we build for the November election date, I think that we probably have revised that schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
But the next meeting regarding villages on the twenty eighth is at the twelve mile library in the boardroom. Um, and so, and the last time we met, Jim and his wife came, uh, you know, we had another trustee in presence. So you guys, feel free to stop by. If you have any suggestions for a head of the committee, let us know.
But only four board members can attend.
Yes.
That's just FYI.
Only four board members attend.
Let you each other know if you're attending.
And, and I'm, I'm generally attending as well, if I need to step out to avoid a board, I will, but I'll still be in the building around somewhere, right? Um, yeah. Okay, um, thank you, Sharon, Chris?
Um, I have two items, so one is I've been, um, signing into the village workshops and the Michigan libraries also, you know, they are so.
They're good.
They are so boring.
But they're good information.
You know what I do, I let, uh, Jill, I believe, talk in the background.
Jill?
What's her name?
Claire?
Claire, yeah, sorry.
I have to say, the first one was deadly.
The second one was better.
Oh, I saw, I watched them last year, so I don't know what they're saying this year.
The village ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been watching them too.
Well, do you think they're?
Well, uh, do you think they're great?
No, they're not great. They have a, they rattled a lot of points.
They rattle information out. So I said you need to send up this all out to the people who sign in. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know.
Look at the notes I tried to take.
You can't take notes because they talk over the stuff. So anyway, they're okay, but there's a lot of information.
A lot.
And I've asked them to please like compile that and then send it out to the people who log in for because he like my, you can't take, you can't even take notes.
You're gonna start, do one person start talking that none of them? I started taking photographs of the screen.
Yeah, yeah. So they just.
You know, they send out the the what's that called? The PowerPoint. You don't have to take pictures. They send you the PowerPoint.
Well, I haven't, I haven't gotten anything.
I'll forward it to you.
All right. So that's one thing. I mean, I think there's a lot of good information there for us, but I do, and I am like not a notably slow learner, but I just really find it difficult to follow. So that's why I, maybe I just need a writing. Or anyway, yeah, okay, thanks. And so I do sign into it. All right, so the second thing is I'm I'm going to miss the April meeting, but I want to tell everybody why because it's very cool. So I'm missing the April meeting because um my family has been uh invited to lay a commemorative wreath at the tomb of the Anno Soldier.
Oh, my God.
So I will be doing that.
Wow.
Yeah.
Awesome. I hope that you take a GoPro or camera or something. I'd love to see.
I'll I'll take some pictures, but what I did when I found out that um my family was being invited, because we have so many people, uh, we have so many dead people buried there, um, I applied for another organization that I'm a member of to also do it. So they're going to do it three days later. And we're actually going to take professional videographers for that one.
Okay, can you do that some video?
Yeah, so I kind, it's kind of exciting for me. So if I wanted to tell you that, then I'm all done.
Thank you, Chris. Um, that is exciting. Um, I will share that I am also watching, rewatching, because I watched them last year as well, the village uh webinars from the Library of Michigan. Um, a lot of information. So I thank you ladies for.
It's just a brain dump. You just can't, I can't keep telling.
Uh, and that, of course, triggered crazy emails to Kelly about she's probably like, why is there any email in me all this stuff because I was watching this webinar and I'm asking you questions about stuff that's off about on the webinars. So blame the library. Do all right.
Uh, I saw one of the attachments in the email was a patron comment about kids falling in the stairs.
One is they've never fallen down stairs. They've never fallen. So the stairs don't, the stair, the building nineteen fifty and nineteen seventy respectively, right? Well, I guess they're both nineteen seventy, but so there's no between the stairs are open. They're open. No one's ever fallen between the stairs.
Design, yeah.
It's a little alarming.
Yeah, not, but I would have heard something.
Falling between the stairs.
I've seen them get their heads stuck in the railing with us because they put their head in there and got them out.
Is there any uh Crisco or anything involved? How do you get them out?
Well, the mom just kind of pushes her head down.
I'm one of those kids who got my head stuck in the milk chute when I was little.
Very. All right, any other trustee comment?
Bobby, I have no comments about our book discussion, but Bookmobile meeting.
I wondered about that.
What night was that? Was that Monday?
Tuesday.
Monday night.
Monday?
Or Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, we had a uh a discussion on um on the possibility of of Bookmobile and it was a um it was a good discussion. And Jill did an excellent job, a lot of information. She did research with um Rochester and who's in?
Troy.
Troy. And uh obtained input uh from librarians there as to their feelings on a Bookmobile. And um I believe that the uh results were favorable from those discussions. Um, she also had information about different vehicle options and um while I personally am a fan of a coach, it may not be realistic, it may not be necessary. Uh, but I think that uh we all came from that meeting with the uh feeling that it would be a positive attribute, a a, an asset to this library system and to this community. And um I I think a concern was expressed, well, that's a lot of money. And we have other projects. But I think that there's also a point to be made. Uh, there was a brochure which I uh emailed to uh I think, I think all the trustees, uh, which is rather thick brochure. And one of the points that I thought was particularly significant in there is that analysis shows that despite the large expense of the Bookmobile on a cost benefit basis by comparison to actual capital improvement to fiscal plan, you have a favorable analysis in favor of a Bookmobile. Meaning the money spent is better applied to the purchase of a Bookmobile and the operation of that Bookmobile by comparison to capital expenditure on fiscal plan. Um, I think that sums it up.
Yeah, Bob, I'm good glad to know these meetings are still happening. I was not sure if you all were still having them. Um, as I'm looking through the survey data again, some of the response that I do see to the question around, you know, if you do not use the library, why you don't, one of the top responses is that the library is too far from it. And so I do think that uh what you guys are looking to to help alleviate that, that people are concerned, that we kind of do know where there are some pockets of.
I I I have a strong theory on this. Um, I have personal phone numbers. The Bookmobile came to my neighborhood every Sunday. But but it's more than that, too. Um, we spend a lot of time talking about equity of access and we all know where the library is and we all use the library, but there are communities here that are limited mobility or uh perhaps uh a cultural heritage of not using libraries and exposure, you know, you pull up big red library bus with cartoon characters, Lucas come running and it's an event. It's an event. It it provides I feel strongly about it. I do.
What are the next steps?
Uh, so we're just kind of like a strategic plan or a service plan to see where that takes us, I think. Was there something?
Well.
I think we're going to look outside libraries. You know, there's a lot of mobile buses, you know, and you can get ideas from so like Oakland County has a mobile bus for, you know, education or medical or, you know, whatever. But Oakland County Health Services or something, um, the police department has the big old command center type thing, you know, you can you can get ideas on the benefit of a bus by looking outside of your own industry. And so we're going to do a little bit of research on that. And then um and then to write a service plan to see what that would take and it would be the staffing you would need, what kind of driver you would need and put all of that into it first. So that's going to take a little bit, but I think that's it.
So one one other thing that's absolutely critical, of course, is the finances. And and that's one of the reasons why I read this with interest today. Um, I don't know how much money we have available, but it would certainly be a determinant as to guiding future decisions and and how to approach it. Um, I I do want to talk to Kathy about, you know, financial issues and and perhaps even involve Plant Moran um simply to see whether it justifies, whether it's feasible. And we recognize, of course, the concerns expressed about village votes, et cetera. But by the same token, too, I I I think I think that you bring something new and exciting. It's not like putting a slab of concrete and a couple of picnic tables in. This is truly something at a new level. This is something that gives community access where there perhaps is not. And that's, those are my thoughts.
So we're going to write in the service plan that we're going to have a caricature caricature of Bob Hahn. Or in honor of Bob Hahn.
No, 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 no.
Truck, yeah.
Are you going to like that jet off?
No, definitely. Well, here. So so I mentioned this before, but but I do recall that we received a bequest, a quest of substantial amount of money. I don't know, what was it, a hundred ninety thousand, perhaps? Okay, so let's say, I I don't know who gave that money. Let's let's name the Bookmobile or honor the people that gave that bequest in memorial of Louise Adams and have the family there for ribbon cutting and have the local photographer there and put it in the front page of the Farmington paper. I mean.
I like that.
There there's a whole lot of ways that this could be used, not only for access, but also to publicize the services of the library.
I also think with a formalized service plan, we we have the opportunity to see partners who might be willing to help fund the activity in a way.
I just want to say I'm happy to share any of the research that I did with the uh staffing surveys of the libraries and that sort of thing with any um core number if you're interested.
I'm beginning to see.
Um, Bob, yeah, um, it's quite a, for many years, they have a a truck, you know, with uh ceramics or whatever. They finally did get them in. And and if you want, I'll ask them, they had it now for like two years, what the cost was, what the benefit is. They have the same thing. They want to be in the community. Um, and uh but that was a struggle to to get that and they have it now. So I'll I'll ask them what the history is and what their expenditure is that they find, because it's very much close to the public and the community because it's got, you know, the colored pots.
I've seen that there.
Yeah.
And that's an alternative usage other than a library tour.
Right.
So would these be full time staff or time staff?
Well, that's has to be, well, that's what has to be determined.
Yeah.
And part of that discussion is where could it go? So Maria and Crystal were in charge of where would the vehicle go out in the community? And so based on that and how often. So you have to decide.
So.
And part of the other part was that you have to talk to the community partners that you think you want to go to to see, number one, depending on the size, does it fit in their space? And number two, um, are they willing to have it there? Because if they're not willing to have it there, then we pull back on that.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't have to be the same time every week because that's when your people would be.
Always would be every week, depending on how many stops you have. You have to, you have to set up a schedule. Right, yeah, it would be a schedule, but it may not be at one location every week. And I'm going to a Bookmobile rally on April sixteenth in Lansing for the MLA advocacy day. Um, so I'm going to get to tour a bunch of Bookmobiles and then talk to their staff.
Wow.
Take a picture.
Yes. And there's a librarians and libations event afterwards. Want to have a cocktail hour with a bunch of librarians.
Oh, wow, we gotta go.
But I will take lots of the drinks, please.
So I have one more suggestion on this. Um, I'm I'm considering becoming unemployed within the next couple of years and um.
Oh, you're going to drive?
That's exactly what I'm saying. Now, now, I'm not, I'm not saying full time, I'm not saying all the time. I'm saying put me on the list and yeah, I will.
Maybe.
Got to get a license.
Wait, wait, you need the first one.
No, you got to have a commercial license for driving one.
No.
You don't need one.
Twenty six thousand and one pounds. You'd be the C D L.
So.
Yeah. Yep. Oh, we've done others.
So so Kelly's husband's going to drive. We used to drive. And I'll drive. So between that, we got covered.
All right, that would increase staff expenses. Thank you.
I'm a volunteer. I'm a volunteer.
You also have to do the checking in and the checking out.
No, you have staff. You have, you have driver and you have staff.
Oh.
Because I may be, I may be uncomfortable with the ruffians that come, I wasn't that the story?
Ruffian, ruffian.
The ruffians that may be coming to Bookmobile.
Yeah, well, that for safety, they had to have two staff members at all times.
Okay.
Does that stand?
All right.
Um, a lot of libraries did have that. Um, Troy said they only had, they have one person now, but if they ever felt uncomfortable, they would have this.
And registers.
Or registers.
Uh, Kathy?
Yeah, just I'm just another thing I remember. Um, I have set up with Michigan Class um the ability to have um Bernie and Kelly and myself and Kelly from uh Plant Moran to log into Michigan Class. On April, on the end of March, I'm going to take the monies from a fiduciary account and have them wired into Michigan Class. And then um so that will start with the first. I think first. That will give me a chance to look at and turn out the statement with the fiduciaries. And then um I'll also then.
How much will they transfer?
Four million from um the village and I I'm not sure how much we have in the right.
But the entire.
Yeah, the entire fiduciary. It's probably a thousand eighty five. It could be only that value. But I'd have to look at the statement.
Four or four and a half.
Well, I'm really excited about that. Um, it's done a lot of work.
Could you set up the Zoom call yet?
I was going to talk to you.
Oh, okay. Okay.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Um, do you have your financial management, if you're earning more on the money, we appreciate that. If that helps us more, more resources. So thank you. All right. Any other trustee comment? Any more trustee comment?
Just that the personnel committee is meeting on the twenty fifth, Monday, the twenty fifth. Personnel.
All right, personnel committee on Monday, twenty fifth. That is an important meeting for the personnel committee. I believe you will be discussing uh annual increases. That time, so um.
Will will somebody send a reminder on that?
I will.
All right. See, no further discussion, no further comments and no further, and the idols, we all consider ourselves, sir.
Chris, he sent me a note about name tags and I wrote back to.